Four thirty, the meeting will come to order. Roll call.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Gay.
Here.
Commissioner Sapsi.
Here.
Commissioner Owens.
Here. George, can we get you to pray for us?
Your, uh, bow your heads please. Our most gracious heavenly father, we just ask, uh, special blessings tonight as Christmas is approaching and we just pray that you'd be put special blessings upon our veterans and our servicemen and women. And also our first responders, father, that you'd keep them safe, close to you. We ask, father, you'd be with us tonight, that we would deliberate and do the best we can for the folks of Grashit County. For it's his name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic, which is standing in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we had a couple additions to the agenda. Mission on aging, we had an application for district five. And for L eight, they'll have ARPA funds. Any more additions to the deletions to the agenda?
Which one would you say the ARPA fund things?
L eight. L eight.
L eight, okay, sorry.
That being said, I would motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Were you approved, made a motion to approve the agenda? Tim, you second?
I second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any public comment? Consideration to adjourn the regular meeting and hold a public hearing.
Home.
Supported by Steve to adjourn the regular meeting and hold a public hearing for the brownfield redevelopment plan. Jim?
Evening, everybody. Jim Wheeler from Greater Grashit Development. And as you know or should know that we manage the brownfield authority for the county. Hence why I'm here. Uh, the reason that we are here is that we have another project. And when you think brownfield, most of the time you're thinking pollution. But the biggest thing that, uh, brownfield has right now can be is for obsolescence. And that's helped us immensely with our downtown buildings. We have a building in downtown Alma that is being proposed for a brownfield project. Of, uh, it's gonna consist of nine apartments in it and frontal space that will be, uh, commercial. We have our developer here and Ryan Smith at Gemini Capital, which I can't say enough good things about all the things Ryan's done in our communities. It's been super. Appreciate everything he's done. This, uh, helps them along the way with their project, which is a pretty substantial project that we're looking at. So I think the total in it, going in this quarter, it's, I have it there, what it is. Eight here. Three, little over three million dollars is their total investment. The brownfield will encompass about six hundred and sixty-three thousand change. And, uh, so I explained to some others along that lines. The developer has to put all the dollars into the project. And then the brownfield, what it does is, as you pay your taxes down the road, you get the money back up to an approved amount for them. So it, it is a way that, and what it really does, it helps make a project in a downtown area be competitive with going out on a greenfield site. Building it from scratch, starting over again, not having to redo a lot of things that come forward. But then your downtown suffer immensely because you don't have buildings and fix-ups and those types of things down there with it. So it's been a, been a great program for us. Uh, Ryan, like I say, has been super developer communities and really appreciate it. Be happy to answer any questions anybody asks about it.
This is the building that Morning Sun.
Correct. Yep. It's on the north side of Superior that, uh, Morning Sun had in there. I think, I mean, I would say this was one of your, maybe it would be one of your easier ones as far as the amount of work will have to be done. But when you still look at it, it's north of three million dollars. So it's.
You said eight apartments?
Nine, nine. There'll be three downstairs and six upstairs. So, and then there'll also be a commercial studio in front that, uh, that will be occupied by somebody that has a business at that same point. And that's really the way most of the zoning code is reading the communities where they want the actual front that's on the, the main street to be commercial and then the apartments above or behind. Makes it a pretty attractive. And frankly, all of the apartments that have been done, uh, every community that we've worked on are full. So it's not been a situation where we've had any vacancies. We've all seen a downtown traffic increase with it. So it just seems like a really a win-win for all of us. And, uh, again, as we're working forward with our master plan. In case you love me, but, uh, you know, one of the main things of talking about the master plan is a lack of housing. So the more we can agree with this, the better it's been for our communities.
I, I have a question. Um, you happen to know what range the prices would be for rent out the apartments?
For the dollar seventeen cents per month. So per square foot.
Per square foot.
If you had eight hundred square foot apartment, you're gonna be about nine hundred bucks.
Okay, thank you.
This is pretty competitive rent in the market. I mean, there has been some, you know, there's definitely been increases that we've seen over a period of time. To see that kind of level as compared to what you're seeing in some larger cities, uh, it's still a pretty competitive rent dollar.
Your, your goal on these, are we talking some studio, some one bedroom, some two bedroom, or are you going after a certain like size throughout all of them?
Is it all one and two bedrooms?
One and twos, okay. Okay, no studio, okay.
Allow pets.
We do allow pets.
Do all, okay. I have a daughter that lives there in case I kick her out. With her.
Wish where my children were living or going to be living, it was. Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah.
You remember this as I used to.
Chicago, Ohio, Rochester, Minnesota are nine hundred dollars, I'm a D and square. Not even, from your fee, I'll house you tonight when you're locked out of your house. So.
Any more questions?
Well, if you pick that location, I guess.
Well, to be perfectly honest with you, it's an federal opportunity, so, and so, um, we had this entity set up in advance to defer some, um, pains from another project that we needed to take advantage of. So. The project came available, it's in, in the federal opportunity, so it meets all the criteria for downtown redevelopment. And so we.
Perfect. I like to, people being upfront and honest, we do what, what it's, what it's all about.
If there's no questions, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing. By George, supported by Tim to adjourn, uh, public hearing and go back into the regular meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, up. Consideration to adopt the resolution twenty.
Make a motion that we adopt a resolution twenty-four, three, twenty-eight for three eleven East Superior Street redevelopment project in Alma.
Support. Moved by George, supported by Steve to adopt the resolution twenty-four dash three twenty-eight approving the brownfield plan for three eleven East Superior. Roll call.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Sapsi.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes. Motion carried.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for working with, with Grashit County, I appreciate it. Look forward to seeing what it's gonna look like when we're done.
In consideration of the consent calendar.
Consent calendar.
George, supported by Steve to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Osnay, motion carried. Administrators report.
I have a quick report for you. This evening, uh, we have made an offer to, uh, for the position of animal control director candidate that accepted as an internal candidate, Davey Haas. So you'll see a familiar face. And the truck's still going forward. Um, our final update on you guys for the chart of accounts, that's being updated, the, the general ledger. That's being performed by the Woodhill Group. It will be converted tomorrow night after hours and will be implemented by the time the employees are here, seven thirty in the morning. So we'll no longer have to update you on the progress of, of that project. And it will be done before, uh, audit starts. So there'll be none the wiser that we ever had a coding that was not in compliance with the state of Michigan.
Right.
Last week, we had our employee appreciation lunch, uh, I believe, uh, nearly all of you attended. Um, I thought it was a wonderful lunch and thank you for being there to support our employees. Just after our last meeting, there was a planning commission meeting where we did talk about the battery storage units. The ordinance that we're looking to get together for that, uh, Consumers Energy was in attendance for that and Spicer Group was also in attendance. So it was a very good work group. Um, the planning commissioners were able to ask all of their questions, ask why they're recommending this number of feet or why they're recommending this level of sound and things like that. So I do expect that there will be a recommendation, uh, after the January meeting that they have, uh, coming to the board. So, uh, I know that a lot of your townships and municipalities have been asking about that. It's been a hot topic lately. So we are rounding third base here and we'll be coming home.
I have a question I was asked at the meeting. Um, they are gonna build a building or they're gonna? Are they gonna build a building for that? The batteries?
We are just writing an ordinance.
Oh, that's all, okay.
That, that is the only thing that we're doing right now.
They haven't decided yet whether they're gonna put up.
They have been inquiring around, um, the county. Uh, but we've been asking them, please just hold off for a couple more weeks and we will have ordinance in place that will benefit both uh, economic development and taxing entities.
See, the reason I ask that, we have so many empty buildings now. Some fairly new ones that were put up, setting empty that.
The, the buildings for this, they'll, they'll be, uh, fairly large setbacks. They will be specialized. Um, we won't be able to take an existing structure and turn it into that. It would have to be.
Dan, these things look like, picture a whole bunch of industrial storage containers. Those are the buildings that house them. It looks almost exactly like a storage container, s- sitting right next to each other, several buildings. They do that for heat, fire, all that stuff there. They keep them separate. They don't put it all at one. So that's how they do those.
Well, I was just thinking about the new Clover building that they had built not that many years ago. That's, that's empty and it was, it's.
St. John's Wire.
Yeah. It was lined up the right direction for.
The, the building happened to be east and west. And that's, I, I can't tell you the physics. I can't tell you the nature of it. But they have to pull the wire east and west.
Yep.
They make magnetic pull of the earth, they have to. They make big, big wire and a little wire.
I'm glad to hear that. That was a beautiful building. Okay, go ahead.
That was all you had, C P?
Yeah, that's what I sent for you.
Well, Steve?
Uh, committee reports, let's see. Last Monday was a busy day. I had three meetings all at the same time. Um, so I started over in, um, New Haven. Uh, spoke with them for a few minutes. They, um, have their own zoning. So there was a little bit of talk about the, um, battery, um, storage facilities. They have a, one of the, name, I'm looking for the, the transmission where the power all comes in and goes out to the.
Substation.
Substation, thank you. They have a substation in their township. So most of the talk you're hearing about where they want to put these battery storages are near substations. Obviously it makes sense because the power has to come out of the substation or out of the battery storage up into the grid and it has to be near a substation. So they have their own ordinance. Um, so they talked about it there. Uh, went from there to Newark. Newark had their new board, their three new board members, um, all sworn in. They were there, uh, uh, New Haven swore theirs in while I was there. Um, all that went very well. Um, it was nice to get to meet all the new board. Um, then I left there, went to Perrington. Obviously Perrington, you guys all know, lost, or passed away unexpectedly, um, Bob. So they're in the process of having to replace him. So there was some discussion about that. Um, that they had a moment of silence for, for him and that was nice. And, uh, I get to be a judge. I get to ride around in this, uh, a little disappointed they didn't want me in a Santa suit with my beard and my belly, but you know, they just said I gotta ride in the fire truck Sunday to judge the lights around town. So I said, uh, I would do that for them. And then, uh, went to Elba the next night. Um, they don't have a ton going on. They had their new, they swore in their new trustee, which replaced Tom Bradley, the guy that we had, uh, recognized. Uh, everybody keep Tom in your thoughts and prayers. Tom is in tough shape right now. He's home, but, uh, he's pretty tough health right now. Um, let's see, then Monday. Just yesterday I went to North Shade, uh, North Shade. We had, their ordinance was in our packet today that we just approved. Um, they are looking at, uh, they built their new hall, um, got their generator and everything all installed. They made the final payments on that. For the generic backup generator, they are looking at possibility of whether they're gonna rent their hall or not. They've talked to some of the surrounding townships that do. If they're gonna do it, what they're gonna charge. And then they need to put some sound deadening in their, um, main room. It's really tall ceiling and hard floors. So it does have some echoing issues. They're looking at, they had a proposal there. Um, a company came out and told them how many square feet of the insulation board they'd need. Uh, but no pricing. So they were supposed to be getting some pricing from them to see what they're gonna do moving forward. Tomorrow I have Florida Health, which is a week early because of Christmas. Parks and Rec tomorrow night. So we got a few on the agenda here, things to do. So. Is that short enough, Andrew?
Okay. I made it quicker.
Okay, I, um, I've been to a few meetings, went to the planning commission meeting. I did not ask any questions. I had laryngitis. Otherwise I would have had a lot of questions. But anyway, it was fun. That was the first time, or maybe second time I've been to the meetings that they have here in the commissioner's room. And then I also went to a G I S meeting out at Pine River Township. And that was real interesting too. It's fun to go to those meetings. And, um, I have several meetings up this week that'll be attended.
Ken?
Um, December ninth, sorry, went to the Emerson Township meeting. Prior to that meeting, I, I saw Bob Icorn. He, he asked about, uh, cemeteries and Michigan rules, uh, concerning cemeteries. Uh, but then when I saw him at the meeting, he, he's got all the kind of information he wanted. Uh, and there's two cemeteries there. Uh, one's on Tyler Road, which I go by. A lot of them made the meet, one on Badly. Um, there's a, a lot of upkeep on cemeteries and, uh, loved ones put things on the, you know, gravestones and graves and, and of course they're not around. They get stolen or moved around. And they talked about, uh, that. Uh, there were two girls there at, uh, Ithaca High School, uh, attending, um, for, uh, a school governor or civics. Uh, I know. Summer twelve, they went to a mental health board meeting and we met, it was kind of Christmasy, but we met at the, uh, drop, what they call a drop-in center on Plain Avenue. Uh, across Superior. It, it used to be the Burger Chef, uh, over forty years ago. I haven't really been in the building, but, uh, it's, it's nice. Uh, people can have internet access, TVs and there's a pool table. Uh, we sat at small tables opposed to one big table. But the meeting was, as usual, um, the short time I've been on the board, one big thing I, I think they want to discuss is, uh, the stigma regarding mental health. Um, sometimes we, we felt that, uh, mental health is just like a weakness and people should snap out of it and stuff like that. But, uh, a lot of times that just doesn't work. And so it, it behooves more, more study and I tell you, the people that need the, the most help are the ones hardest to help. So they've got their work cut.
Okay, George?
Uh, on the ninth, uh, I went up to North Star Township. They had their regular meeting, um, at such time that, uh, the, the clerk had, had the, uh, the, uh, oath of office for all the officers. And, uh, it's funny going to the township meetings, not one does it the same. But they all read the same, out of the same playbook, in other words, but it, but they always do it a little bit different. It's kind of interesting. I just, I enjoy that kind of style, how they do it. But, uh, they did that. Uh, John Hardman did make comment that he was appreciating the fact that the blight, uh, projects were brought out on, 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 on the Friday for all the townships to see. They can see not only theirs, but everybody else's and it keeps them updated. And he really made comment because it, he, he was quite critical of it for a while, but he's coming back to the, the fold, if you will. He's seen a lot of progress in this new, this new ordinance that we've been able to, to get out. And he's pretty pleased with that. That was that. Like I say, the twelfth, we had the holiday or employee recognition for the county. And then on the thirteenth, at the health department, at the R E S D, had a, had a, one of their meetings that included all three counties. And at that meeting, there was meal. And you know me, I never miss a free meal. So I went and visited with the folks and had a meal. And well, there's catered that one. So I've, I've been eating good the last few weeks. And, uh, so that's that. And, uh, that's it.
While I was reading, uh, the Mac News today online and, uh, uh, sounded like the sewer ordinance, uh, was a lot better than we had expected.
Did they pass it or is it tomorrow? They're going for a committee tomorrow?
I just, I think it's passed yet.
No, it passed one house and it has to go to the other house.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we'll get a complete update.
Standing as tomorrow is the day we'll know for sure if changes are coming.
We'll go, we'll go, tomorrow. Either way, it's not gonna be good. Okay, right now. Where they got any, they couldn't, they couldn't.
It's about the subject team.
Yeah, anyway, they write it, it's not gonna be good for any health department. No. Tell us against it.
Spill Township, uh, had their first meeting in their new hall last Wednesday, but I was eating sushi with my bride and my daughter, so I didn't make it to the meeting.
You just skipped, yeah?
No, forty, forty-eight years ago.
The other day.
That's all I have. Consideration of new business. Consideration to fund the Grashit County Land Bank Authority. You wanna talk on that again, Jim?
Get my money's worth tonight. The Greater Grashit, we're also administrating, or admin, the administrators of the, uh, land bank. Uh, what this is, is, was round four. They've had, uh, four rounds so far of, uh, grants has gone out. The round three, when if you remember, was the, really what started us was the half million dollar grant. It's the project that we're currently working on in, uh, St. Louis, which has, uh, become quite a project as we go forward. We, it started out with the idea that we were going to shore up the building from that point. And then now it's, uh, morphed into, uh, actually, uh, tearing it down. Uh, but, uh, still have a ways to go to see whether that's gonna happen or not. Because, uh, we have had to find out, uh, the asbestos amount in there that would cost to do it. And then, uh, also it's, it's a common wall building over in St. Louis and we have to deal with the common wall. Actually, Ryan owns the building directly south of it. So that, uh, we don't know what the expense would be to deal with that. So quite sure how that was gonna play out. Uh, it's a, it's a big project in the city. The city actually held a public hearing and I don't think there were many people, uh, that, uh, came out to express their views one way or another about it. But, uh, I'll guarantee you, if you take a building down in the middle of a town, somebody's gonna express their views.
Oh, I've heard it.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm parting with you there. It's a.
Coffee table, just a buzzer.
Yeah, it's, it's quite the project. So I, I would give it fifty-fifty at this point that whether we do this or not. Uh, it's, uh, and these grants and this one's one, I'll talk about this one is, uh, specifically given to us on one of the others that we'd put in before. There's a small building in Alma that, uh, fits the idea that the city owns it now, no longer has any use for it, uh, has a lot of issues with it. It's right along the rail between, I believe it's between Center.
Cross. That.
There's the two roads that would border it. And that rail is the one that's also being talked about, having the rail from Ann Arbor to Traverse City. So we would be one of the stops along there. And this could make a natural spot for some of the stops to have it. Not this building would work at all, but, uh, to have something there. So this round of the grant would be a hundred and sixty-five thousand, which would be used to demo this building. Much simpler, much simpler.
Secretary of State building?
Yes. Yeah, District Court, I believe, was in it for a period of time. It was, well, or something like that. So.
Apparently our extension is in there.
Yes.
It is. Have to find them a new.
Yeah, we, well, it. Yeah, it's actually in the, the bigger building over there.
That part that's closer to the rail is the one they're talking about. No, no, they're talking about the one that's a little bit south of that that's closer to the rail, correct?
It's actually in the rail right away. Uh, it got built from that standpoint.
Is the other building, the one that's kitty corner from the library?
Pardon me?
You're standing in the parking lot of the library, the Alma library. Is that other building you were talking about, the one that's?
No, no, no. The, the one I was referring to here is in downtown St. Louis.
Well, I know, I know the big bank building.
Okay, yeah.
I was talking about in this deal in Alma.
This deal in Alma, no, not at the library. This would be up right behind.
Okay, I know right where you're at the building you're talking about. There was two different buildings.
No, 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 I'm sorry to confuse you.
It's south of the post office.
Yeah.
So you know right where he's, I know where I'm in the extension office.
So that's the two buildings we're talking about here.
And just when you walk out of the extension office, it's to yourself.
One time that Secretary of State's office was in that building.
Could have been, could very well have been before, yeah.
It moved over and then they moved again.
Yeah, there was like three movements that they've had. So in any case, this one's a, a much cleaner deal. It's one that, uh, we just demo in this building and having it out of there. The, the problem with these grants are they are reimbursable grants. So you have to understand, we have to front the money, do the project, and then somebody has to sign off on it to make sure that you've done it to their satisfaction and needs. And then they.
They give you the money.
And then they give you your money. So I'll, I'll be, I'll stand up here and tell you, I'm not wild about reimbursable grants. I'd rather, give me the money. We'll tell you what we're gonna do with it. We go do it. And you're not subject to somebody coming in saying, I didn't quite like what you did here. So we're gonna do that. So that's why we're moving along it. I, I would consider it a snail's pace from that standpoint to make sure that we're dotting every i and crossing every t as we go forward. So, but, uh, in the case of this one, this one I feel a lot more comfortable with just because of the nature size of it. It's already owned by the city. Then there's no common walls. There's really very little things that I think could be an issue with it. So I'm comfortable enough asking for approval that basically what we would say is would you agree to fund the project for us and then we pay you back as we get the funds back through, uh, the state.
I hear a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we we'll reward that.
Fun, I, it'll actually be, I guess Chris will probably be the one.
Pretty much right here, what this says in this box.
It's basically, you're gonna give consideration for the land bank to spend up to a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for a blight elimination round grant. For fund that upfront. The idea that it will be reimbursed once the project is completed by the state. The idea that it will be reimbursed once the project is completed by the state land bank authority.
By Jen.
Support, babe.
Or by Steve. To fund the the land bank authorities for project up to a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Probably should have a roll call on that.
Yep. Commissioner Sapsi.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunty.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes. Motion passed.
Thank you. I think I'm done now.
You you can leave now.
Thank you. It's going to be a great opportunity in the next five years. For sure, that.
Okay, L number two. Lady in the pink shirt.
That's pink coat.
Actually, a sweater.
Thank you, George. Uh, first of all, um, thank, on behalf of the Prosecutor's Office, thank the board for their prior consideration of our request. It has luckily allowed us to put the right staff in place, and we are in a fantastic position considering where we were in my prior visits to the board meetings. Uh, this request today, the first item is simply an update. Prosecutor's Association, and I'll be really brief, but I'll answer as many questions as as any of you have. One is an update. Prosecutor's Association has uh, decided every prosecutor's office in the state is moving to the same software. That is a Herculean task as we are going. Uh, if you've seen our offices, we have paper files everywhere, storage everywhere, file rooms. We are moving completely digital files. So attorneys will now go to court with a laptop or a tablet. Uh, that's it. It's going to be huge. It's beyond overdue, but it's a huge task in the switch over, as I've detailed in the memo that I sent. Um, luckily, uh, the new Chief Assistant Prosecutor, Ryan Belay, is coming from an office and has multiple years' experience using this exact software already. So while I don't know what I don't know, but I'm very excited. Uh, he is, uh, has been instrumental in the process for what it's going to look like and what we need to do to get ready for it. So he has now become our client, uh, Carpal Point person. He's our project manager. So that first portion is just an update. This is the program. This is what we're moving to. Uh, luckily, there is no cost to the county. Prosecutor's Office has covered, I believe, the the implementation, which is very costly, as well as the next two or three years. So year one plus two more years. Um, as Ryan can attest, when MatCon County did it, they used their ARPA funds, I think, uh, but it was a huge cost to the county. So, uh, we waited enough that now it's been covered. Uh, moving on to item two, the Axon Justice Premier. This is a system that I have researched, uh, a lot, looking for our next step in our office for uh, electronic discovery. Electronic discovery is, uh, police reports now don't come, uh, they all come electronically. That's fine. We're we're dealing with that. Uh, what we have now is mountains of electronic discovery. Um, and for instance, one case, one cellphone, and imagine how many cases we have where a cellphone is downloaded. Um, that is on, uh, the amount of data in that is more than we can do on a flash drive, on a disk, on anything. It takes actually a terabyte of data, uh, in many cases, and that's one cellphone from one case. Uh, that doesn't count videos that we get. That doesn't count all the body cams. You guys had a uh, presentation from Digital Ally, uh, with the Sheriff's Department. In researching this, I also spent quite a bit of time looking at what Digital Ally offers. Um, the nice thing about this Axon program that I'm requesting authorization to purchase is that it's already linked up with the Carpal software that we're getting. Those two companies have worked very well together in many other counties. Um, this will eliminate work for some of our staff. Uh, it'll allow us to very clearly track what we've given out to defense attorneys. And if you've read in the papers, even locally, um, to our south, there have been issues with prosecutors' offices tracking what discovery. It allows us a very, very easy way of tracking uh, sometimes hundreds of pieces of evidence and what actually has been disclosed, which is our ethical obligation. So for many, many reasons, I included the executive summary with that also, which was kind of a shortened two or three page summary of what that does for us. So that's the first request. The second request then is, um, item three is the temporary position. With this changeover to our new software, we are looking to take our current unfilled halftime position and temporarily make that full time. With the agreement that that will let us up our staffing for a period of time to get ready for the software change. There's a lot we have to do. Our our staff is going to be changing to some extent, not the people, but the jobs that are expected, the training that's going to be required. So this extra, um, bump up that we're asking for temporarily is going to allow us to have um, somebody help us get all of our documents ready, help us scan the documents that currently need to be scanned. Um, as I stated, that, uh, we have to keep for, uh, very long periods of time. So as I said, I'm happy to answer any other questions about specifics. I know I put all of this in writing earlier, but those are the things that we are looking for. So one is an update on Carpel, two is a request the Axon, uh, Justice Premier, and three is, uh, the increase in that position, which we are then committing to give back. And we will go from a support staff of four point five people down to four people for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Yes.
Now, the Carpel is just a matter of us allowing the Pam to do this, correct, with our records? Correct? Is that, I mean, it's no cost to us. You don't need to, we're not spending any out-of-pocket money. It's more of authorizing the Prosecutor's Office to
I don't even know that I'm looking for anything specifically. It was more an update by way of this is what's
We don't need, really, you don't need a motion on this.
Not looking for any action on that item.
That was, I was a little like, because, you know, it was our action item things that was listed out there. So, okay, I I feel better about that because I'm like, what are we approving? We're there. They approved it. They're doing it whether we say yea or nay. So
Getting rid of the current program that we've used since nineteen eighty-nine, which is A C T and J C T, adult case tracking and juvenile case tracking. That's something we currently pay for, and I, off the top of my head, can't even tell you what that is, but that system is going away. Part of this also involves the payment, which is more than ten thousand dollars uh, for the conversion of all that old data since nineteen eighty-nine. They convert that to Carpel, so.
For you, it's a way easier system than A C T and J C T. It was good in eighty-nine, but it quickly
May have been okay in eighty-nine.
Yeah, may have been okay in eighty-nine because it was, they didn't ever have anything, but yeah. I used it a lot as a detective. Anyway, um, Axon, um, I I'm pretty familiar with that company as well. Wonderful. Um, so you're looking for sixteen, approximately sixteen thousand dollar approval. That's what you want?
That's year one, and that was because that built the five thousand dollar. We could have split that out um, over the first five years, but it made more sense. Um, if we were in a position to do that, it was a better rate if we could pay that up. So that makes the first year sixteen thousand as quoted, and then the additional subsequent years.
Eleven to twelve for the remaining.
Correct, and that was also detailed in the attachment.
Is that yearly then?
It's yearly.
Okay, eleven to twelve will be yearly. Okay.
Correct.
All right. And then your temporary position, because it's a monumental task, what you're asking to do. I mean, I've been in your office enough to know there's literally mountains of paperwork that all have to be updated in these. Um, is if we give you that one person, is it going to be enough for you to get this job done?
What I can tell you is the staff that we have, because we've been so short-staffed at different periods of time, I am very confident, and I'll have Ryan weigh in too, the staff we current have will be willing to get that job done in that period of time. If you look at our combined years of service in that office, it's huge. We have the right people. Um, we're hoping to also bring, uh, this new person on, possibly somebody that has some experience doing this. That would be ideal. Um, you know, otherwise
I just want to, I don't want to shortchange you because this is going to be a huge job for you guys. I mean, I think it's wonderful and way, probably way past its due, but I I just want to make sure you're going to be able to do it because I know how I remember when some things were digitalized in my previous world, and it's a job, I mean, a real job to get it done.
If you look at the time, the implementation timeline, you'll see that that doesn't start till a hundred and twenty days out, which will be sometime like in April. So by authorizing that for January, we'll have a couple of months to get that uh, individual kind of up and running, and then get some of those other things done in addition to the rest of these tasks that all of us will be involved in.
Right.
So, Rob, you have any other thoughts?
Planning it out this way, uh, allows you to, if you need to renew that temporary position in the next budget year, that's when we would do it.
Okay, so, all right. I just want to make sure she has the staff she needs to get this done because I know it's going to be Well, I just want to make sure because I don't want, you know what I mean? I I I'm concerned for you guys and your staff. I want to be sure. Because it's going to be a job. All right.
Any other questions?
Need motion to approve the software purchase.
I so move that we approve the Axon Justice Premier um, for the Prosecutor's Office to purchase for their sum of sixteen thousand dollars this first year with the subsequent uh, years two through five, eleven to twelve thousand dollars yearly.
Second it.
Moved by Steve, approved by Jan, supported by Jan to approve the purchase of Axon software. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ooh, nay. Motion carried.
I so move that we approve the remainder, is it three point five F T to make it to a full-time? You're at four point five. You want to, you want to make them full-time.
So another
An additional three point five, right? To make the four point five up to it, it's eight F T, isn't it, to be full-time equivalent because it's hours, isn't it, four point five, like a part-time is?
Oh, I'm counting each one, sorry, as we have four and a half positions. We need five, so I'm just asking another.
So you want to take four point five F Ts up to five. So to prove that the Prosecutor's Office can move up to five F T staff, full-time staff, where there's support staff while they are, uh, updating all this Carpel and Axon software. Is that right?
Can you also amend the budget accordingly?
Okay, and and amend the Prosecutor's Office budget accordingly to account for this, uh, five F T support staff position.
I will be working with Sheila to get that posted and, uh, working with the, um, administrator to also discuss all of that as we go forward.
All right, I have a question for you. Will you be able to get this done during the daytime when you're busy? Or will you have to come in at nighttime and do some of this work?
We will, uh, staff will all be doing it during their business hours during the day.
You'll be busy.
Anywhere.
I hear support. Moved by Steve, supported by or George, pardon me.
Well, is that a roll call one to increase?
I have one more question for you too. Um, how many weeks do you think it'll take you? Is this something that'll take months and months or weeks and weeks or?
I'm thinking, we're we're estimating this is going to be about a nine-month process.
Yeah. Good luck. Thank you.
Moved by Steve, supported by George to allow the Prosecutor's Office to add one position.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunty.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Sapsi.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes. Motion carried. Information management. Information manager.
Evening. I have four items to discuss tonight, um, three of which are related to capital improvement projects, and the fourth is a separate item. So first off, I've got, um, a building security improvements, capital improvement project that I needed, uh, vendor selection approval for. Uh, the budget's already been approved as part of the the budget cycle, but I wanted to move forward with awarding this project to E P S. There are current building security, um, vendor that we work with on all of our security camera systems and, uh, building access systems. So because I wasn't bidding this to different vendors, I just wanted to come to the board and have them sign off on this. Chris did add an additional security camera to the list of cameras that we did want to add for this project, which puts the project over budget a little bit, but we have additional funding from a separate source that we will use for that security camera. But I wanted to present it all at once to get approval.
So are you looking for thirty-three, five, Matt? Are you looking for the thirty-five, seven, sixty-nine, ninety-nine?
We're looking for the thirty-five, seven, six, and ninety-nine. I just wanted to be clear on it. And this is to add security cameras to the the courthouse and key card access, uh, readers to the courthouse as well.
I so move that we move to go with the E P S quote for thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents for additional security cameras and card readers for the courthouse complex.
I'll second that.
Moved by Steve, supported by George to approve thirty-three thousand, five hundred dollars.
Thirty-five. Sixty-nine, ninety-nine.
Pardon me, thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine, ninety-nine cents. All those in favor, say aye. Ooh, nay. Motion carried.
Next up, I have, um, vendor selection for our law library Polycom upgrade. This is to upgrade the video conference system that's used in our law library hearing room. And this office is used mainly by the front of the court as well as district court, but other courts use it as well. Um, the system up there is actually hand-me-down from one of the other courtrooms, so it's well overdue to be upgraded and and the intent is to make it more reliable and to make it a little bit easier to plug, um, external devices into that TV and share content over over the video conference system as well. So the vendor for this one would be Jim Ewing. That vendor is used by courts across the state of Michigan. Um, he's the state court administrative offices video system vendor, and he's actually done work here at Grasset County as well. He installed all of our current video conference systems in the courts as well as a system over at the jail and in our indigent defense office. So he's very familiar with what needs to be done and has done it many times here and at other courts as well.
I listen to his questions. I so move that we approve the um, request for to have Jim Ewing, um, install the new Polycom system for seven thousand dollars into the law library.
By Steve, supported by Tim.
All supported.
Go with Jay Ewing for the library Polycom upgrade. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ooh, nay. Motion carried.
All right, next up is a vendor selection for our cyclical personal computer replacement capital improvement project. So the the amount that's been budgeted for this project is eighty-five thousand dollars, and this is to replace computers and laptops in all of our county offices. We tend to replace devices after five years, which is typical industry standard. Uh, my, sorry, that that timetable aligns with industry standards, so we replace a a P C or a laptop every five years, basically. Um, in the past, I've always solicited quotes from multiple vendors, but Dell always wins this as far as, uh, dollars and cents because we participate in the My My Deal program, which gives us discounted pricing based on state of Michigan contracts with Dell. So they're always able to to beat every other vendor on pricing. We also like to, uh, uh, keep the amount of different models and makes. uh keep the amount of different models and makes that we support uh at a reasonable amount, so we we stick to the state of Michigan standard configurations list and tend to purchase equipment off of that list, so. That's why we've been going with Dell and those computers have been very reliable in the past. One of the other benefits is is that if we have a laptop fail, um they actually send a technician to come out and replace components in it. Uh, so that Wes and I aren't spending our time tearing up our laptops and putting them back together just to swap a component out, so. I would like the board to approve Dell as the vendor for this project.
Are ours on the five-year rotation thing too, or six-year?
The the tablets typically aren't part of this. We tend to replace the tablets and cell phones as they fall out of support from Apple, but uh I think yeah, we we don't really have a schedule for those other than just following Apple.
They were just, these are just replaced like two years ago.
Yeah.
Battery and this is junk if it's not plugged in.
Oh, it's fine.
It can be a hundred percent if I have a battery now, six twenty-one, I'm gonna keep it out.
I'm seeing, I mean, if there's some issues, we'll.
Something wrong with it, because it just, oh, it kills the battery, you gotta keep it plugged in if you're gonna use it. Only a couple of years old, so.
I thought this thing, because it had to be because of the battery life, I thought it's gotta be. That's good to know, so expect me sometime.
Alright. I so move that we um go ahead with the eighty-five thousand dollar project to replace our in care.
Laptops and PCs.
For the laptops and go with the state bid vendor Dell for the replacement of computers prior to the end of the calendar year, I think, is what you're trying to get this done, right?
Yeah, we intend to purchase the the hardware by the end of the calendar year and then install them as time allows throughout the year. Throughout the fiscal year, I should say.
Gotta get them now, tariffs are gonna hit, buddy. Get a motion by Steve to have a support. Worked by George to purchase computer replacement from Dell for the tune of eighty-five thousand dollars. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ooh, nay. Motion carried.
And the final item I had tonight was related to a failover internet service provider. Back in October, I had the board approve our contract with Windtel, they're our current internet service provider. Back then, I kind of brought up the point that I was looking to get a second internet service provider so that we could use them as a backup internet service provider in the event that Windtel has issues with their fiber or a fiber cut, so that we're um we're able to continue operating, basically, because a lot of our systems now rely on that connection to the internet for people to get um worked on, our new phone system, and both of the products that the prosecuting attorney's office are both cloud systems, so we are very impacted business operations-wise when we lose connectivity to the internet, so it's very important that we have a failover internet service provider. Um, in the memo that I put in the board packet, there were a few options that Point Broadband uh submitted to us. I recommend option two. It's very similar to what we're doing with Windtel, both in cost and in speed, so uh my recommendation would be to go with Point Broadband's option two and the amount of two nineteen ninety-five per month for a term of three years.
So move. Support. Moved by George, supported by Steve. To go with the point br- broadband, the internet service provider. All those in favor, say aye. Nay. Motion carried. Next up.
Thanks, Matt.
Next up, resolution twenty-four dash three twenty-nine.
Well, despite the title of this recognizing a career dash Chris Olsterhoff, this is not for me. A few more milestones I need to hit before anyone knows who I am. Um, we have uh put together a resolution for our sheriff, Mike Morris. And uh Commissioner Sapsy, would you care to?
Read it for the board.
Resolution expressing gratitude, Sheriff Michael Morris for exemplary service and dedication to the community. Resolution twenty-four dash three-two-nine. Whereas Sheriff Morris has served with unwavering commitment as the sheriff of Gracha County, demonstrating exceptional leadership and dedication to the safety and well-being of the community. And whereas, under Sheriff Morris's leadership, the Gracha County Sheriff's Department has successfully fostered a strong sense of security trust and cooperation between law enforcement and citizens of Gracha County. And whereas Sheriff Morris has consistently gone above and beyond the call of duty, working tirelessly to implement innovative programs and initiatives aimed at preventing crime, enhancing safety, and supporting the wel- the welfare of all members of the community. And whereas Sheriff Morris Morris's, excuse me, dedication to the people of Gracha County is evident in his effort to promote transparency, accountability, and positive leadership with the community, as well as his consistent availability to listen and to address the concerns of citizens. And whereas Sheriff Morris has shown exceptional leadership, compassion, and professionalism, setting an outstanding example for others in law enforcement and public service. And whereas the Gracha County community is stronger, safer, and more united as a result of Sheriff Morris's selfless service and tireless effort. Now therefore, being resolved by the Gracha County Board of Commissioners that we express our deepest appreciation and gratitude to Sheriff Morris on his exemplary service, dedication, and commitment to making our community a safer and better place for all. Signed by our clerk, Angie Thompson.
We need a motion to uh accept the resolution.
I move.
All those in favor, say aye. Ooh, nay. Motion carried. Next up, animal shelter lease.
Uh, we lease the animal shelter building from the city of Zico. There's a ten-year lease, they're just a dollar a year. They're, they tried to give it to us, but they told us they weren't gonna take it.
They really tried.
They did. They they very much want us to own that building for and everything that's buried by.
Do with the nine point four one acres they want to give you.
Yeah, with 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 the uh solution.
That's what they want to give.
This is fairly straightforward, the building's in good shape, we keep it up, we ensure it. Just looking for a motion to uh resign with them for the next time.
Moved by George, supported by Steve, to approve the lease on animal control. All those in favor, say aye. Carried.
Alright, they'll probably be passing this in about thirty-five minutes at their meeting.
Oh, their meeting, yeah, okay.
Okay, on to board and commission appointment.
Well, this year, I'll I'll cover this.
Okay.
So this year it was pretty easy compared to the first time Steve had to do this in December of last year. Um, all of the offices for every position, we just had one person apply. Um, you do have in front of you an application for Commission on Aging, District Five. Uh, nobody applied for it, we put all that line for this book. So we do have Gail Paradise that I'll get it up on extra, I'll get her application up on extra that we can approve for District Five, because there's already in that seat um as of today. So all of them except for Veterans Affairs, which is at the bottom, number I. I don't know if you want to do one motion or if you want to go to every office and appoint those people, or if you want to do one motion.
Yes, you do it the way, we'll do it the way you'd like us to do it. I can do it simple or you can do it hard.
I suggest one motion.
One motion that we approve um for all the boards, A through H. You're going to appoint all the people who apply.
Make a motion, right? Yeah, I make a motion.
I'll support that motion. Moved by Tim, supported by George, that we accept all these people's application for the different boards and commissions. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ooh, nay. Motion carried.
So the Veterans Affairs, you do have a piece of paper, we had one position. You do have a piece of paper in front of you that if you would circle between Robert Baxter and Todd Crawford. Uh, Robert Baxter, I believe, is a trustee for both the township.
Yes, Robert is a trustee for Fulton District.
And Todd Crawford is already um a on the trust fund. He has applied for the Veterans Affairs in the past. He has applied for Baxter, did not get it, but he is on the trust.
Steve, did you know the uh Robert Baxter? Is loud for him or?
Yeah, Robert, I mean, I I know both of these candidates, to be very honest with you. Yeah.
Well, okay, I don't.
Know them both, both outstanding, both of them are vets.
I don't really know.
Yep.
Yeah, you know, you'll go wrong either one.
Yeah.
Um, I know them both, because they're both great people.
Todd Crawford, he does a lot with Veterans Affairs.
Does a lot around. And Robert does a lot around. Actually learned something about Bob, about this.
Okay, so we have two for uh Todd Crawford and we have three for Robert Baxter.
So do you need a motion on that then, or is it because it was?
For by both.
By both, okay.
For the three. Alright. Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much, thank you for all you guys do.
Hey, item number seven, Commissioner wages. Chris?
Yeah, alright, as instructed at our last meeting, um we gathered some Commissioner wage cops from uh several of the other counties. Uh, I believe we were able to get uh over twenty-two of them, we just focused on the twenty-two uh that were attached here, all on one page. Um, as you're aware, MCL Chapter forty-six for the County Board of Commissioners has changed, uh taken effect lately. Uh, we went from two-year to four-year terms that you'll be serving. Also, in order to increase compensation for the next uh board that comes in, it has to be passed before the end of the calendar year before they take their seats. So this is the last opportunity for this board to affect wages or compensation going forward for the next four years, so that is why we put this together.
Um, I want to ask you something, Chris, how did you, how did you do this?
I did not do this. Uh, this was done by Katz County. They reached out uh uh the their HRs in all of the counties and asked for a compensation.
Because if you go online, it's not right. Um, I know that Chihuahua County is where I'm from, and I know some people there.
Okay.
And I knew that one was wrong, went off the bat. So I went on my line, on my phone, I'll show you. And um I went in, what what I did was I put in um how much does commissioners make in Isabel County, I was saying, I brought, I kept a copy of these and it brought it up, it wasn't, it didn't, it didn't match with this, that's why I wondered. So I don't know if somebody was in a hurry or how they did that.
So you Google searched Chihuahua County Commissioners?
I did that, I went online and searched that too. Here, let me show you where I did. See.
So I am looking at Chihuahua County's twenty-twenty-five adopted budget. It shows that they have seven commissioners. And the salary twenty-twenty-five, they budgeted hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which would include uh per diem, it would probably include mileage and it would include there, so they're getting compensated a little less than twenty thousand dollars on. So it seems to line up pretty close with what was reported here.
Here's what I, like, yeah, I'm like. It doesn't matter to me, I'm just letting you know. And that might include, that might include other stuff too. And here was, I started doing it by.
What are you saying that the the Chihuahua County gets per commissioner, their chair and their board?
Um, this one, I'll bring it right up to you, give it to you. I was surprised, because when I, I have friends down there, but I haven't seen them in three, four years. It seems like they told me like thirty-seven thousand. Right here is County Commissioner for.
Well, the total package, when you add in
All the other stuff.
Taxes and benefits, you're looking at about thirty thousand dollars.
Because they get, they get a merge retirement and uh life insurance and health insurance on theirs.
Yeah. Here it was.
With the ARPA funds.
Yeah, it's eighty-two, eighty-two dollars an hour, a hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven. I think that was the one for.
That's, that's um, yeah, I I would prefer to go directly to their budgets to see what they pay them to use it.
I just did that for the fun, just because I was sitting on, and so I, I, you know.
So that was one of.
I know that, I know that it's our Sag on it gets quite a bit, because that's was the issue on different issues on the board I sat on. Um. Um, I don't know if you can go by all of that anyway. It depends on what they do, how many people, how many board they sit on. I mean, there's a lot of factors that go into that. But it doesn't matter to me.
A lot of them, they get per diem for different rates of per diem, depending on half-day, full how many meetings they can attend in a day, all that stuff. I think talking to you guys, you guys used to do something similar to that and you, to simplify life.
Yeah.
In twenty twenty, was it?
Before that, maybe not.
Before you guys, you guys did the, some years back is when you guys went to a set fee with mileage, not not no per diem stuff, so, you know, I brought this to the board's attention because today's our day, if we can do it, it'll be twenty twenty-eight before we get to talk about it again, and there'll be new people sitting in these seats. Or potentially new people could be sitting in these seats, could be all of us, who knows? But anyhow, my my um, looking at this report, talking with Chris, um, I feel currently our board chair, I want to start with our board chair. Currently, our board chair makes five hundred dollars more than anyone else. Um, if you do the math on the board chair to the, to a regular commissioner, um, a lot of them are considerably higher because of the extra responsibilities the board chair has. I would like to see our board chair position go from uh, let's see, I had it, and I don't want to say it wrong. But currently, our board chair gets three point, not quite three point four percent. I would like to see our board chair receive ten percent additional compensation for being the board chair, so for instance, if we get fourteen-four, For instance, if we get fourteen-four. That position would then go to fifteen-eight forty instead of fourteen-nine. Just because I don't have to come in here to sign contracts, I don't have to come in here. Whenever Chris needs a signature on something, or he just had to go to Detroit for a um, a hearing in a federal court. I I don't have to do that stuff, I would gladly do it if he wasn't able to do it, but since he was able to, he did those things, and I think that there needs to be. Personally, a little more compensation, it looks like it's kind of a standard thing across the, the state of Michigan, the ones that I had. To to view anyhow, so that, that's a recommendation that I have, um. I also think, I'm not a big fan of lump sum amounts, because I don't think it looks good. So let's say, we waited till twenty-twenty-eight to do this, and then we said, oh, we're going to give ourselves a twelve percent raise.
So just to back you up.
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
The average that of what we have here. The board chairman is a, a little more than eleven percent higher than the other.
That's the, that's, I came, I couldn't remember the exact number, I just knew it was high, way higher than what we did, so that's where I came up with going ten percent. My recommendation, instead of doing lump sum raises, which if you've read anything in the newspaper, Ingham County had a sixty-five percent raise. For their commissioners, um, Oakland, I believe, was just in the news, thirty-five percent. Monroe County was a large. Yeah, they're high, high months, I, it doesn't, whether justified or not, it just looks bad. I would rather we have approved contract, three-year contract for our employees, where they get a three percent, three percent, three percent. The fourth year, I would recommend that we do whatever our non-union staff, whatever we end up approving for them for a raise. Whatever that will be, and we don't know what it is, that we would get that same thing, so there, we're not setting a precedent. We're also not getting more than what our, our staff get for a cost of living raise, so that's, that's where.
And I, I agree, I agree with that.
Like the, you know, just stay with what our people got, all we're doing is keeping up.
We've been able to, to do three percent a year for the last few years by contract. We've just initially put into play, all elected officials will get that three percent also. And I, I think it would be. Very fitting if the commissioners, and I agree with you, not one lump sum, but three percent. And we would go along with elected officials in that regard, and it would be very simple, just three percent a year. For the next three, three years, and then in the fourth year. Uh, you're looking at, by that time, we'll have all the union contracts in. And we will make a determination at that time, but I assume we'll go along with the program if it's working, and I think, I'm sure it will. That we go along with that, and we would, whatever that percentage lays out, that's what we would be. And uh, and if we needed to make some adjustments, that would be the year to make that adjustment for that following. Uh, group of commissioners coming in, and that, and that new election site.
Absolutely, also, under additional benefits, if you, if you look at Gresham County, um. You know, we get the medical dental reimbursement, if you look at a, a number of these, I think. Chris, was it sixteen out of the twenty-two that had a health benefit?
Yes.
Um, armed to it, uh, many, more than that, I believe, have a life insurance. So I talked with Chris on what it would take for our county commissioners to be. If you work for Gresham County as a full-time employee, you have a life insurance policy. Sheriff's Department's is higher simply due to the risk of the job in hand. All the other employees, I believe it's a twenty thousand, correct, uh, life insurance policy that, um. That they get for being an employee with the county, so that's something else that I think we should look at adding.
Not expensive at all to do that.
No, I think, I couldn't, Chris had a, had a figure that he kind of thought it was, and then, as I caught up in that last meeting.
Just for the record, I think somewhere close, it's between seven and twelve dollars a month.
Yeah, so between seven and twelve dollars a month per employee, it's going to cost us, there's five of us, that's thirty-five to sixty bucks. For the county to have this life insurance policy for us, I don't think that that's too much of an ask. But it's a, it's a good thing to have, if something were to happen to one of us, for our families, I mean.
Help, carry my, my health expenses, whatever.
Now, the, the thing that I brought up last time was the number of them, uh. A health insurance benefit, and um, I don't think that's something the county wants to take on right now, but we're looking at a four-year term here. What about adding in the health benefit in the third, so that for the third and fourth year? A commissioner would receive, or have the ability to receive as a full-time employee. The healthcare benefits that the county provides for our, for our staff. Um, and I realize, I'm probably the only person sitting at this table that doesn't have, you know, doesn't qualify for Medicare, okay? But I'm not really concerned so much about Steve Sopsey today, or in twenty-twenty-six, or I guess it'd be twenty-seven. I'm more concerned about who we are trying to attract to this position as we move forward. Um, in twenty-twenty-eight, we're going to be asking people to apply to be a Gresham County Commissioner. And. I just think that that, that added benefit, that additional benefit, that we could put. Out there would possibly attract more people, more qualified people that want to do this job. Not that any one of us is not, but I just think it's good to have people that want to do these jobs, and, I mean, you have, we have. People that are self-employed in this county, we have people that are business, small business owners in this county. That this might be the ticket for them to want to take a, a role in our county government. Um, and so that's why, you know, I, I talked it over with Chris, I think our budget can handle that. As we get into that third and fourth year, I don't want to, you know, stick something on him early, it gives him to plan. I don't know how others feel about, but that's my proposal would be to, to add those things, do a ten percent to, to the board chair. Go from the three point three to the ten percent, that we would get a three percent raise for twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. We would get whatever the, after the contracts are settled, we would get that amount that are. Are that same percentage, life insurance would be added in twenty-five. And in twenty-seven, the health insurance um, would be added.
Pro-rated, how, how is that, how would that look?
Most of the commissioners at other counties get the full health insurance that non-union employees do.
A non-union full-time staff.
Okay.
So I do see in my um, memo, I, I do have some date typos. While you were laying all that out, I had one, one of twenty-four, and it should be twenty-five. One, one of twenty-six, and it should be twenty-seven.
Okay, yep.
If you do use my memo for a motion at a later time, just realize that. There were a couple other things that you had talked about too, that you wanted to throw out to the commissioners, one was. Uh, for the county to offer non-union dental and vision. Uh, which for our, our employees here. Uh, it is one hundred percent paid by the employee. But it is bargained, and you're part of a group, so the, the rates are considered fairly low. Um, and that would be something that could be offered, and also. A full share of the dental vision and mental health reimbursement instead of a prorated share. Uh, I believe right now, your prorated share is either two forty or two fifty a year.
Fifty right now, uh, the commissioners is, and I think that would bring it up to four hundred now.
Either, I think it's. For single.
Four hundred for single.
Six hundred for married, seven fifty for family.
We can make it for whatever your position you were in, I mean, we can make it for, if a person comes on the board and they're married. We could accommodate that with no problem.
Those are some, just some suggestions that gives us kind of more a full package when you look at. People who would be looking at this position, they're going to contact the clerk's office, that's who they have to contact about this. Uh, to get their name on the ballot, and you'd be able to tell them, this is the package you receive. You know, at the current time, um, to become a commissioner. I, I just really, I feel strongly about that we have to do something, but I, I don't like big lump sums, because I, all these are, is cost of living things, and. Quite frankly, the, the health insurance, life insurance, and the other insurances, basically, we're just keeping up with what other counties have. Um, our surrounding counties, I mean, that's, we're talking to people that touch us and our comparables in size, I mean, we're not, this isn't anything that we're really stepping out.
It's in the wheel here.
No, not at all.
So, if you guys don't mind, I'd like to just run through the list one more time to see if anybody has anything that they. Would speak against.
Okay, I just have to ask you a question, so if you take our wages, we're going to go up one percent, so how much is one percent?
It's three percent percent.
Oh, three percent. So how, is that three cents on a dollar, or how do they do that?
Three cent, fourteen thousand, four hundred times point zero three.
If we want fourteen thousand, four hundred times one point zero. Take your wage to fourteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars in twenty-twenty-five.
Yeah, and then you just go from there.
Fourteen thousand, eight thirty-two in twenty-five.
Okay.
Fifteen thousand, two seventy-six, ninety-six in twenty-six. Fifteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five and twenty-seven cents in twenty-seven.
And we don't know the twenty-eight.
And you don't know what the twenty-eight would be.
Yeah.
So, does anybody disagree with establishing, let's go through each one of them, so we can. So establishing a ten percent. Um, wage increase between a commissioner and a chairman.
No, I. No, I don't, uh, I don't want to give us any raise at all. Uh, I ran on small government. And if I ever get the courage to say to some people, you know, no, can't get it. Well, they'll say, well, you gave yourself a raise, so why are you denying me? And uh, I didn't, you know, the four, what do, what do we make, fourteen thousand, four hundred?
When you.
Fourteen thousand, five hundred.
Four, well, thousand four for us, fourteen nine for the board chair, that's fourteen four.
That's, that's nice, uh, but when I was approached for this job, I. Salary wasn't even discussed at all. And uh, I think a lot of people that would run for the job, this job, but salary would be secondary, really. And I, I'm for small government, I don't want to give us a raise or benefits at all. That's my position.
Well, when you look at how many people ran for this position. It was only myself and Steve, nobody ran against you three, because they couldn't come here and work. If they wanted, if they needed to make a living, they couldn't.
They wouldn't, they're going to make a living anyway, but it'll help, help offset someone that was a farmer. Or a small business owner, or something like that, that would help them with their personal life a little bit. And they could still contribute to the Office of Commissioner. That's, that's what we're trying to do, is to make it available for more people.
And this is not a lot of money.
If you look around this table, how many are retired here?
All of us.
That's right. Right, and, and we're not getting any younger, and I think Steve's right, we're trying to set this up for future. Missioners that, for lack of a better reason, are a lot younger than we are. In their fifties and sixties, they got a lot more uh, energy, let's say, to do a lot of things, not that we don't, but they're. We, we, we're trying to create opportunity.
And another thing too, you know, you don't want a commissioner that changes every year, because it takes a long time to learn.
Right.
Everything there is out there.
Well, I think.
I've been on the board how long?
Twenty-four years, but I don't know who's counting.
You're certainly live, or you're constantly learning.
Oh, yeah, every day, every day you learn something different.
Yeah. And things have changed dramatically since I started, so.
I, I think, I, and I was like you, Tim, when I started out, I started out simply to volunteer, so I could help the county, and.
Passive, right.
And then you look at it over time, and it's. As you get retired and you're into it, it gets tough, sometimes it gets a little tough, but. This is the first year, and I'll admit it, this is the first year since I've been a commission, I've been a commissioner, I've just found out for ten years. That I started taking mileage. And started, the gas prices started to hurt me, and I had to, so I take mileage now when I go to my home chips and that. I take, I take mileage for that, so I have not never done it before. So there's, there's some room for in here that even helped me out a little bit.
Well, and I, I think that we're adequately compensated for right now, but if we do nothing. In four years, we're going to have fallen behind.
And, and you're right, and you're right, Dave, because as we remember, this is our best chance to make any adjustment in our wages or benefits. For four years. It's not like we're going to, a couple of years rolls around, we can do it, it's four years.
We can't by state law until the end of our next, this next term that starts in January.
We would have to go in, 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 in that.
November, December of January, or twenty-twenty-eight.
Eight.
And we can do this again.
Yeah, so it's, it's takes, it's.
If I did the math right, it's two thousand, two hundred and three dollars and twenty cents, if. The board chair went to ten percent and got a three percent raise, and each of us got a three percent raise. The total of that package would be two thousand, two hundred and three dollars and twenty cents. Additional cost to the county for wages only, that's only the wage thing.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Uh, your compensation falls in line with road commission, they make the same.
Well, we're going to take care of that too.
Okay.
That's the new process.
Okay.
It's coming.
Soon.
Thank you for bringing it up, but no, it's coming, because we, after we decide this, then we'll, we're going to have to decouple. And then, and the, uh, it's been discussed with the road commission, they know it's coming. But.
So to make it easier, I would make a suggestion that you approve the chair, and then you talk about the wages.
Wages.
You talk about life and health insurance.
Okay. So Chris gave us, first, we, we've just talked about the chair position, so. I'm going to so move that the Gresham County Board of Commissioner Chair. Receives a ten percent over what the regular commissioners, the other four of us commissioners get.
You better get a roll call vote for all that. About, I'm, I'm sorry, I'll, I'll prove. I support that.
Of January one of twenty-twenty-five.
And making budget adjustments, we have to.
I think I'll be okay with this one, it's minimal, we can move it around.
So this is just for the chair.
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Commissioner Gay.
No.
Commissioner Sopsey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes. Like a hypocrite if I ruled no on that topic.
I think that's, I think that's very fair.
We're not, we're not going above and beyond, some of these, some of these guys make a hundred grand a year.
Yeah.
Being a commissioner.
So then, your next motion to increase.
I was going to, Chris, you were going to go through the list, so then our next thing would be the three, three, three. Three for twenty-five, three for twenty-six, three for twenty-seven. Would be whatever we agree.
The way that we saw it, heard it with our peers, was to tie your annual. Wage increases to the non-union employees.
Okay, so that would, which would be effectively three, 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 and then question mark, correct?
Correct, theoretically, you know, you negotiate with the unions, but if you fall on tough times, unfortunately, the. Employees that are in, not in unions, they sometimes don't get the benefits of.
I think Chris makes up a. I think Chris makes up a good point. Steve, maybe we wanna tie this, wait, a commissioner's wage will increase at the rate of the non-union employee.
That's how other counties have theirs worded.
I think that would.
It just equates out to.
We don't come in there. I think that's best.
Okay, I so move that the Board of Commissioners. For the years of twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, receive the percent of increase in wage. According to what the non-union staff members of the county receive.
Effective.
Effective January one of twenty-five.
I support that.
By Steve, supported by George, that the commissioners. Get the rate of increase that the non-union employees did. Roll call on that one, too.
Commissioner Sapsy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
No.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes.
Oh, Chris, will that need a, a budget amendment for that amount?
No, we will be able to.
And by the subsequent years, it would be, you would know. Okay, so then the, the, the third thing would be. As Angie had asked about lumping the insurance package, I guess you'd call it the additional benefits package. And do you wanna run through that again, Chris?
Well, what had been discussed is, uh, year one, starting in year one, there would be life insurance. Non-union dental and vision offered at no expense to the county. Uh, in full dental vision, mental health reimbursement that is coupled with. The employee paid dental and vision. Then what was. Suggested was year three, full healthcare benefits.
Year three and beyond, then it would be full healthcare, correct?
Do you have that risk?
It's in the memo. So if we're looking at it cost-wise, like you said, life insurance is about ten dollars a month, so we're.
Fifty bucks would be, yeah, somewhere between thirty-five and sixty dollars was the swing of what he'd given me, you know, from seven to twelve dollars a month.
And then between four hundred and six hundred dollars a year in the reimbursement. And health benefits, you know, we haven't negotiated what those will look like.
That's wonderful. I didn't know how it was gonna pay for when I died.
Is that just for single or family or a couple?
It would be the same health benefits that are offered to non-union.
Whether you have a person that.
Yeah, I just, I didn't know if that should be clarified or anything.
Thank you.
Okay. So if I hit all those dots, let me know, okay?
Okay.
Okay, I so move that as our additional benefits. As our, starting effective January one of twenty-five, that there be a life insurance policy. Uh, for twenty thousand dollars that, um, the non, you'd be able. Eligible to purchase at the non-union rate for vision and dental. That the full reimbursement for vision, dental and mental health. Rate be applied to four hundred singles, six hundred fam, or married, seven fifty, is that what you said, or seven hundred?
All that's a non-union.
Okay.
Case their contract change.
Okay.
Yours is updated.
So. We will receive the same, um, as the non-unions vision and dental. Uh, benefits and reimbursements according to what their. Uh, contracts read. With the third year of one, or January one of twenty-seven. In accordance with the non-union agreement, agreement. To receive full health benefits per how they, um, receive the health benefit. Be added and for subsequent years thereafter.
Yeah, why do you have mental health on there? What's that one for?
That's for the, the reimbursement you get now.
Yeah.
That's added on to that, you know, we, we get a reimbursement for some of our dental and some of.
Your vision.
Vision.
Yeah.
All right, that would be added on to that also.
Yeah, but what would you use it for?
Good counseling or.
If you had a problem and you had to go in for some mental health, you can use part of that for that service. Yeah, and we give that to all our employees.
Did I hit all the?
Yeah, so if anybody is curious what is offered to non-union employees here, you can find that in the personnel policy.
Okay.
Which is published in the website.
Basically, we're, and a lot of these are trying to mirror the personnel.
Of the non-union staff.
Yeah.
So back to regular, we would still get two hundred and fifty for dental and optical, right?
Not after the first year, if this goes through.
Go up.
Go up to four years, four hundred.
It was negotiated.
Hundred for a single.
Four hundred.
Yeah.
And then, um. The other thing I have a question on is our mileage.
Mileage will be predicted by the federal government. We'll learn that the first meeting of the.
Yeah, no, I mean, like, I only do it for, um, any meetings I have. Do I count meetings when I go to my township meetings?
Yeah. Township meeting.
I haven't been doing that, but that's okay. It's not a big deal.
Yeah, and it's, yeah, township meetings. Yeah, I might, twenty-five miles away, one of them. One way.
Up to turn in my leisure, yeah. And I don't know if they paid me for my recharge, I mean, dental and dental. Or optical, I mean, I'll have to ask them. Who do I ask? Becky or Sheila?
Becky.
Becky.
And as soon as you get paid, you get an email. So if you search Gresha in your email, you should find it.
Yeah, every time you get paid, you're gonna be, you get an email.
You do? I don't.
Yes, you do.
I don't think I've ever gotten an email.
Well, I'm sure she, it's, if you have, if you're getting emails, the county email, it gets sent to you.
I don't get the county email.
Then maybe you don't have, she don't have your email address.
Yeah, that's why I don't get it.
Well, then you have to get your email.
Okay, I'll get with her. Put her email. Okay.
Okay, move by Steve, or by George. What Steve said that Angie.
Okay. Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
No.
Commissioner Sapsy.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes. Motion carried. Can we stop Steve from getting this? Or, uh, him from getting this?
I, I thought about that.
Well, I was about ready to ask you. When you get your check, are you gonna accept it?
I, you know, I don't.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna say, I'll just put it out there.
I don't really follow my findings.
Yeah. Yeah, I was about ready to ask you. Okay, uh, now, uh, and Angie just mentioned it. We are tied, uh, together. This was back in the early nineties, I found out. I don't know where the paperwork is, but it doesn't matter. Um, that any, any wage or anything subsequent to that, that the Board of Commissioners receive. Ergo, does the road commissioners. Uh, we've had talks with Mark, uh, at the road commission. She, he, and we told, I told him what we had thought about doing here, and if we did do that, we would like to. Decouple from them because it makes it too complicated. It really does. So he, he embraced that. In other words. We're not gonna hurt their feelings, we're not gonna go out of our way. All we're doing is making a, a, a legal separation. Between what the county commissioners get and the road commissioners get. And I would make a motion that we do that, and, and I would ask the chairman to instruct the clerk. To send a letter to the road commissioner, uh, verifying that that's what we've done.
I'll second that.
Motion, motion by George, supported by Jan, to decouple the commissioners with the road commissioners. And. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What was nay? Any other unfinished business? Other is L eight ARPA.
Yeah. So similar to what Matt did tonight. I went into Tony Miller's office and told him to give me everything that he has on his desk so that we can get some of these contracts signed.
Yeah.
For, to, you know, two different reasons, just in case, uh. Goods and services do go up on us next year and just in case we need some of these contracts to cover our.
Yeah.
About funding, too. I wanna have these contracts in hand so that I can send a copy to the federal government. Saying all of our money is, uh, recommended. So, uh, I, he had so many things working in progress. I was very amazed. So this is gonna be a very, very busy place, um, you know, over the next four months. So I listed off, uh, all of the, uh, votes and contracts that we have. Our jail oven, uh, is, we're having some severe problems with that. Thankfully, Lonnie in Buildings and Grounds has. Put a couple of Band-Aids on it so that we can.
Those aren't cheap either, those ovens, sir.
We just bought one for commission on aging. Like, I can't remember how much it was expensive.
They're expensive.
But they, they do everything for you. I mean, it was amazing what they do, but my God, they cost a lot.
One of the big ticket items is the cross connector roof, uh, the ten-year warranty just came, went up on it.
Yeah.
Uh, we wanna stick with the same company that put it in there because we wanna renew the warranty. It'll be cheaper to work with them. Because it's their work and they know how good it is. Um, so, um, HVAC software, HVAC software is from the nineties and.
That's why we're sweating in here tonight.
Yeah.
You guys know.
Need something to balance out.
Issues that we've had with this.
If, if, if the system is right, you won't need fans.
Our boiler room controller, uh, is glitching. If you go into the software, sometimes you don't even see it in there. Which is scary because that can cause all of our heat.
To go yet.
The clerk's office carpet was on schedule to be done, uh, this year. But they got leapfrogged, uh, leapfrogged by, uh, another place, but we have the opportunity to throw that back in here. That acoustic carpet, that's been on my short list of things that I wanted to get replaced. It looks terrible. Luckily, it's not on camera. Um, I don't know if you guys had noticed that a lot of the doors around the outside had been refinished last summer. But for some reason, the main entrance.
Trains did not done.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna ask you about that.
Yeah, the ones on the front, everything looks really nice.
For this one.
You walk in, the ones that are locked, nobody uses.
What I imagine what's happening is they don't wanna do it with, in working hours because of the traffic that's coming in and out. Well, I imagine that's a scheduling issue.
And we have several other, um. Jobs that we want this company to come in and do too, so when they lump them all together, it makes it worth their time. I don't know if you've noticed the wallpaper throughout the.
Yeah, it's gone off. Especially now by.
Some places, just to, so that adults, like children, open and tearing on it.
Oh, goodness. Here, that one right out here, right, I mean, does.
Hey Mike, I gotta ask you a question. This is the law library, library right up here, right?
Yes.
You guys ever get worried that that's gonna collapse? Because I know the law or the library in St. Louis was at, at the other end of the police department. And they said that one day they found out that it was starting to sag. And that's the reason they built the police department.
Yeah.
Built it, whoever engineer was that built this.
This was engineered properly to take all that weight.
But you know what I'm saying here? Look there, Chris. Don't you think it sags in that one corner?
I would.
I think he's looking at an optical illusion because you got that wire running across there.
I noticed the peanut.
And I would have to imagine that that wall, that right behind the chair has a lot of, a lot of.
It's not a low bearing, it's. I imagine it's a low bearing wall.
Yeah.
It'd be upstairs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Being engineered in the nineties.
Where are we at here?
Um, blinds in the circuit court, they are. So old, they're literally deteriorating. We can't clean them because they fall apart. Um.
Haven't you fixed them yet?
It's on the list, is on the list.
What do you do with all your time? You could be eating those.
One bandit.
Control valve replacements, um, the last time that we had. Environmental control issues with. Offices having freezing cold air blowing in them and other offices having heating. It's these valves, um, they're going bad. Uh, the total cost of the projects that he had on his desk, we have contracts available for a hundred and thirty-one thousand. Five hundred ninety-nine sixty cents. Coupled with, uh, the projects that Matt has and the, we're expected to have the lighting project done. Uh, this month still, you can see in the back, they replaced those, but.
Yeah, they were in here the other day.
Yeah. Um, so with those contracts, we have, well, we have more than enough to.
Cover using the ARPA funds that are available.
Correct.
With doing this, whether they're covered by ARPA or not, we are locking in.
Rates.
Pricing before the new year and changes in pricing.
Yeah.
I'm thinking out loud here, Chris, but maybe one of Wheeler's problems why they're not turning in, they don't have the. Contracts backed yet for rem, in that kitchen. I'm wondering if that's the case.
I'll be reaching out to them soon.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm just, I'm just wondering if that maybe be the holdup is that they don't have all the. I don't know.
I'm counting on them. I mean, they were here.
Yeah.
They, they showed that they were gonna do it.
Gonna do it, but I just don't want them thinking, you know.
Thank you.
New Haven.
Newark.
New Haven and, um, Wheeler are the only ones that have outstanding funds.
Okay.
So if it's about funds, that's, it's been taken care of.
Okay. Um, if there was any money that, like at the end, I believe they had a contract for something in their own kitchen. That they were, had ready to go if the county needed one, a smaller amount of money that they had. Um, I'll have, uh, I'm gonna hold up Katie Cooper and have her contact you if there's something. That's just, there's a. They used all theirs on remodeling the outside of the hall, but I think they knew at the end, if any of the funds left over. That they want, that the company needed to be sure that they had.
Newark.
Side contracts, yeah. And they wanted to do something in that, that kitchen's, you know, go out.
He would know if the funds have all been expended.
Yeah, so that's.
Yeah.
So most of these. We wouldn't typically have to bring to you because they're under the threshold that they're budgeted for, but I wanted you to see the entire plan. If we could.
You want them individually or do you want them all together as one?
I think all together is okay.
Just to approve the projects that were presented to the board from the list provided by Tony Miller. Hundred and thirty-one thousand five ninety-nine sixty and projects for the courthouse to be paid out of ARPA funds. Is that what you want?
That's perfect detail.
I so move that we, um. Pay for the county courthouse or courthouse complex, um. In the jail oven that was presented by, uh, Chris, put together by Tony Miller. For the total of one hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty cents out of available ARPA funds if they are available.
Move by Steve, supported by Tim, to, uh, approve the, the ARPA projects. For a cost of a hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty cents. Roll call.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Sapsy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes. Motion carried.
So this does seem like we're scrambling last minute. That is what was happening. Unfortunately. There was a larger project that we're not certain that we're gonna be able to go through with. Fortunately, there was a larger project that we're not certain that we're gonna be able to go through with, so I wanted to go with some sure things.
Sure, but.
You don't want to give them any money back.
It's just shuffling funding, aren't we?
Yeah, well, we, we don't give the federal government any ARPA money back. I don't want Joe Biden to have a nickel.
Finance meeting.
We gotta, we gotta leave this meeting and go to the finance meeting.
Are we done?
Yes.
Okay, then I would, uh, make a motion that we suspend the regular meeting and go into the finance meeting. By George, supported by Tim, to recess the regular meeting and go into the finance meeting. All those in favor, say aye. George?
Yeah, I've got my stuff up here.
All right, Chris.
Okay, so our, our PR funds and project list, uh, uh, seven point nine million earmarked, uh, at the end of November, seven point four have been, uh, spent. Uh, today, we are at about three hundred thousand dollars in cash balance in the ARP funds, so that's why we brought all of that. So we're going to overspend a little bit, but a lot of our projects are already budgeted and capital improvements, and give them over there. Um, and next year, we get to talk about what we would like to do with the interest earned on this account, too. So if we want to make, try to make an impact with that also, or if we want to just use it for, uh, general operations. Um, expenses in October, uh, included the light replacement project, uh, the first half of that came due. Fortunately, it's not done yet because, um, some circumstances with the crew that was working here, we had to get a new crew, so there was a period of time where they didn't have anybody available to us, but they are working here every day now. Uh, documenting administration expenses related to the Woodhill contract, so through, uh, November fourteenth, that should have said, oh, that's not accurate. It should have said December fourteenth. Uh, ten thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars, um, mostly all due to the chart of accounts. I feel bad for Mary Ann who works at Woodhill, who is doing that. It's just an incredible amount of work that she's gotten done very quickly. Our OPEB account is up to twenty-four percent on the calendar year compared to the S and P at twenty-eight point one percent. I'm working with our actuary, uh, company to put together our actuary report for the OPEB. Once they get that back to me, which will probably be in a week or two, we'll know what our liability is gonna be going forward, and we, uh, in this current budget cycle, we prove to pay off that entire liability, so I'm looking forward to, um, sending that in. Now, any questions? I'm gonna move on to the November cash balances. You'll see our general fund maintained at ten point four million dollars. That is, uh, due to tax collections coming in a little bit later. Um, we have our COVID recovery fund at seven hundred and sixty-four thousand. That's different than what we just looked at, but that's because trust that we have in the account, too. Um, if that's not the balance that needs to be expended by the end of the delinquent tax continues to grow.
And can I ask a question about taxes?
Of course.
Um, how many people, is there more people losing property or homes because?
That would be a question best answered by the treasurer.
I don't know.
My bills are due to February.
Yeah, February fourteenth, I think, Valentine's Day.
I can't, I can't push that bill.
Yeah. I have that, I have to take that bill and hide it because my wife is one of those people that pays things as soon as she gets it. So I'm gonna hide this one from you.
My wife doesn't pay anything at all.
Like me to give you a mine, Chris?
Thanks, Bill.
Give you that nice thick envelope I get from.
You run a nonprofit?
Yeah, nonprofits, what it feels like.
Some rich farmers, you know, always complaining.
Oh, I know.
Now, any more questions? I'll, I'll give you a moment to review the check register, and if you want to ask any, anything about that.
The numbers are on the other.
Oh, I didn't fit it properly.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're a little.
I, Chris, I do see one that's a hundred and one thousand, like, ninety-eight. Or so.
Wondering. Page nineteen goes with page five, right? Am I right or am I off? Or is it eighteen? Eighteen goes with five, sorry.
Feels like I can share them on the TV and.
Would you probably be beneficial.
Yeah.
I feel like I'm gonna give you a break. Can I ask any questions?
I know. I, I just wanted to know what the hundred and one thousand.
Oh, man, you guys have pushed it.
On the expenditure report you're talking about, Tim?
Yeah.
Yeah, the checks, yes.
Okay. Do you know where it's at?
It's right here.
I just was trying to find it out here. I don't think we're in that.
There's another one.
Seven thousand, several big ones on there, so. Sixty-four of those.
Forty-five thousand. Yeah, there's a hundred and one. Did you say a hundred and one thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah. Ninety, ninety-eight dollars and four cents. Towards the end.
Can I resend that to me, Chris?
It's, it's towards the end, the last page.
Yeah. How much is a price?
A hundred and one thousand and ninety-eight dollars and four cents.
My options. It is. Blue Cross Blue Shield. Sure. Yeah, of course.
Can we send that to?
Told you if I, I'm good, but I couldn't find what I have. Yeah, I can do that.
Yeah, I don't want to close it. We'll have our treasurer.
No, she's off this week, Christmas thing somewhere. But, um, if you look at the, uh, November investments is holding true to every other month. It's around thirty-two thousand, and it's what it's been. There are no changes there.
Depressive with interest rates ticking down.
Well, they took down on, but if they're, for these, I want to think they want to kick down a half.
So we're still holding our own.
Going for a hundred and one thousand?
Yeah, it's almost towards the end.
That's one thousand, eleven dollars and fifty-three cents.
Oh, no, no.
No, we got it already.
For insurance.
It was, uh.
Insurance. Page thirty, twenty-seven. Yeah.
Page twenty-six, forty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars.
And if you have any questions on the distribution or the bank transfers, we'll have to refer to the treasurer on that. But if we don't, uh, Chris, you got anything else?
Lung Hammer Ford of Alaso, is that a police vehicle?
What is it?
Patrol vehicle. Lung Hammer.
Should be two, um, one on there, uh, for, and then a little one on there, um, next one.
What is it? Why is it on there?
Patrol cars, new, new Ford patrol cars.
A new one?
Yeah, new Ford patrol cars.
Oh, I would, if there's any other questions, I would make a motion that we return to the full board meeting for the purpose of paying those.
I second.
By George, supported by Tim, to leave the, uh, finance meeting, go into the regular meeting with the intention of paying the bills. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Carry. National public comments. Board comments. Sorry, you, uh, got aged nine years in the grassy ground there out there.
How old are you there? Sixty-two?
Sixty-two in the, uh, yeah.
General.
Sixty-two. I'm thirty-three, and they had me listed at sixty-two.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we would, uh, enter into closed session to cut, to, uh, can discuss the county's security policy, and followed that by the closed session to strategize unit negotiations.
But George, so I think Jan supported it, right?
Yeah, I did.
By Jan, to go into closed session for house security policy.
Okay.